On a call to order, the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for April the 10th, 2023. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Trey Gooch to lead us in our prayer and pledge. Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's go to our Father in prayer. Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. Father, we're so thankful for this opportunity that we can meet here and in some small way take care of the business that people have entrusted us with. Here and throughout our lives, may the things that we say and do be in accordance with your will and be pleasing to our Lord Jesus Christ. Father, right now, we would ask that you would surround the Louisville community the way you surrounded us just a few short weeks ago. Bless them, Father, and take care of them, and send the Holy Ghost to surround them and give them comfort and peace. Father, we do not know why things like this happen, but one day we will. Father, we ask that you will, for people who are troubled, that you would send the Holy Spirit around them and give someone in their lives who may intercede. Father, we ask these in all things through Jesus' name.
We have a good crowd here this evening. It's good to see each and every one of you here. We welcome you to the historic Rutherford County Courthouse, one of six that's still standing, that was built prior to the Civil War. So we're quite proud of this courthouse that we have here. This time, we're going to ask for a roll call and termination of quorum. Madam Secretary.
Jim Everwater. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, and it's good that we have a good turnout this evening. Well, now, I ask for the approval of our minutes for March 13, 2023. Vice Chairman Lee Bogle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those minutes of the March 13 meeting and found those to be in good order, therefore, I make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a second. Commissioner Phillips, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. Any items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Mr. Damasi.
No, sir, if not.
There are none withdrawn or deferred, so we'll move directly into our new business. Item 6A, request for final plat reapproval. Item 1 is East Fork Landing, Section 1, 222006. Forty-nine residential lots on 41.9 acres, located along Betty Ford Road, Zone RM. Blue Point Group partnership are the applicants. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you, and good evening, everyone. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in March of 2021. This final plat is consistent with that approved preliminary plan. They did make a small modification to Lot 16 due to the step area needing some additional soils, but overall, nothing else has changed, and the minimums are still 15,000 square foot for the lot sizes. The final plat was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in February of 2022. The final plat approvals are valid for one year unless they're recorded. Once they're recorded, they're kind of locked in, but this has not been, so this plan, or plat, I should say, has expired, so they are asking for a reapproval at this time. The plat itself has not changed, they're just asking for a reapproval. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our staff?
Just one, if I might. Blue Point Group Partnership, do you have an address for those folks? Not familiar with that name.
They show on the plat, 2506 Morgan Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Thank you. Without objection, I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Commissioner Phillips, have a second. Commissioner Thompson, further discussion. If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved. Moving now into item 6B, rezoning request. This will have a public comment period involved in it, and all rezoning requests will be considered on May 11, 2023, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. Item 1, Kevin Wax for Blackman Baptist Church, REZ 23006. The location is 390 Brinkley Road. Commissioner is District 20, Trey Gooch. Size of the site, it's approximately 6.03 acres, tax map 93, parcel 1603. His existing zoning is residential medium density, asking for pro-zoning of institutional. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant is proposing to zone this property from its present zoning, RM, residential medium density, to institutional. The existing church on the property, Blackman Baptist Church, uses the property for worship, education, fellowship, and community service. The reason for the request before you tonight is twofold. First, the church does have plans to expand beyond the current size that they have now in the future. They have provided some conceptual plans that have been included with your agenda packets that are on your iPads, but just so you know, they're not locked into this. This is something that would have to happen in time, and we'd have to see site plans for that, but this gives you an idea of what it could look like moving forward. So by zoning their property to institutional, they would be allowed to expand as all categories of community assembly uses, which is how we classify churches. We classify them small, medium, and large. All three are allowed by right in the institutional zone. The second and more immediate reason is that the church has entered into an agreement with a new charter school, Rutherford Collegiate Prep, to use their property for one year, starting June of this year through May of next. Community education facilities, as schools are classified in our zoning ordinance, are not allowed in residential zones, but are allowed by right in the institutional zone. So this zone was created specifically for schools, larger community assembly uses, and things like that, and the range of uses in this zone is very limited as compared to office zones or any of the commercial zones. The school plans to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Students would be kindergarten and first grade, and the number would be limited to 106. There also, the school is in the process of having some property annexed into the city of Murfreesboro for development of a new school facility. I've had some conversations with Murfreesboro city staff, and they indicate their Planning Commission has a public hearing scheduled, well, it was just last week. Should this annexation and zoning be approved by the Planning Commission, they would anticipate city council action in early June with an effective date sometime in July. And they would also have to have site plan approval through their Planning Commission. The concept plan that you see on your iPads does show access along Brinkley Road, of course. We do have concern about the width of the access drive into the property, and we did relay those concerns to the applicant. Upon discussions, they have agreed to widen the access drive to better accommodate two-way traffic for both school and church-related activities. Of course, this expansion would have to be approved through a site plan, and something like that would probably just be administrative, because all they'd be doing is widening the access drive. I won't go in too much into the concept plans beyond that, but when you look at those, you can see that eventual plans for the church is to expand to eventual larger parking lot, larger building, but again, all of that would be evaluated on a site plan when that time comes. Properties zoned institutional are required to install a Type 1 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. We would anticipate requiring additional buffering should expansion plans be submitted to our office for review, as the church has already been in existence and operational for several years, and you can see that the concept plans do show additional screening and buffering to the property as time progresses. Performance standards would also be applicable for no-ice, dust, odor, those kind of things. Blackman Baptist Church has, again, been operating on the site for several years. Rezoning of this property will allow them to continue to grow into the future, as well as allow the temporary use of the facility for our charter school. And we talked about the widening of the access drive, which should help with traffic circulation. With all that being said, Mr. Wax is present, and I'll be happy to answer questions at this time.
Commissioners, Commissioner Bogle.
Doug, do you anticipate or recommend the use of traffic control during school? I know it's only 106 students, but do they have any sort of a plan for that? I know it may be too early, but...
Beyond widening the drive to get in and out, I haven't had any specific discussions with them about anything else, like maybe like a traffic guard or something like that, but the applicants here, they can talk a little bit.
I don't see at this level just yet being full signage or anything like that, but just have that in mind as far as the planning. Thank you.
If not, we'll ask that the applicant, if they'd like to come forward at this time, give us your name, address, so that we'll have that for the record. Yes, you can.
I feel funny turning my back on you there, Chairman.
Ah, that's okay.
I'm Kevin Wax. I'm one of the pastors of Blackman Baptist Church. My fellow pastor, Ken Kangas, is here. Our youth pastor, J.J. Gillette, is here as well, and we have been blessed to be able to be at 390 Brinkley for almost seven years now, and we humbly submit this request to you, and we've tried to be good neighbor, and we'd like to continue being a good neighbor, and so we put our request before you and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Wax? Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Wax, charter school, is this K through 12?
My understanding, this is Rutherford Collegiate Prep. This is the first charter school that has been approved for Rutherford County. Matt Herrmann is here as well, and he knows far more about the charter school than I do, and so I would gladly defer to him if that would be okay with the chairman.
Yes, we'll ask that he comes forward. Remain up here, you're live. Your name, too?
Matt Herrmann. I actually also live in Murfreesboro. I'm with the operator, which is Noble Education Initiative. We were approved by the State Charter Commission a couple of years ago for a K through 8 charter school, and we have just recently been given the opportunity to open temporarily up to second grade. In discussions with the church and facility-wise, we have decided we'll just open kindergarten and first grade, which would be 106 students.
Two years, around two years, is that what you're talking about?
It'll just be this first, this one school year, so really, we're talking August to May, August of this year to May of '24.
And then?
And then, so our permanent site is currently going through the entitlement process with the city. I know Doug mentioned, we had a, we were before the Planning Commission last week for annexation and rezoning, were approved, and will now go for two readings before the city council. Don't anticipate any issues there. We, there weren't a lot of questions, honestly, on that site at the Planning Commission for the city, and we anticipate early fall getting, breaking ground over on Manson Pike.
Temporarily for a year, K through 2?
Kindergarten and first grade.
K through 1?
Yes, sir.
Your application has already been approved, and this is a temporary site, your permanent site you hope to open in 2024.
That's right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't hear an answer to the crossing guard and/or slash getting people out of the, out on the street.
So I don't know about a crossing guard, whether or not we would be required to have a crossing guard or not. I know we would have staff at different checkpoints onsite circulating, there's, at the back of the property, there's an ample amount of parking spots and for us to be able to do stacking of cars in order to help with the flow of traffic in and out of the site. And we feel like in talking with, with planning staff, that there's more than enough space on the site so that we don't back up traffic on Brinkley Road.
Anyone else? If not, you can, you can be seated. For rezoning request, we do have public comments period, and at this time, I will open it up for public comment periods. Anyone would like to come forward, either make comments either for or against, you'll have three minutes to do so, and I have a timer up here that I'll time you, and I'm not hostile or anything, but I will ask you when your time's up to ask you to sit back down, but you're welcome to come forward, make your comments, and do so at this time. So anyone like to, please come forward at this time. State your name and address.
My name is Lindsay Dudley. I'm going to try to speak as clear as I can. I'm not a public speaker by any means. I live at 110 Arco Lane, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37128. I am directly behind where they hold church currently. It's my father's property. Sorry if I'm shaking. Thank you. I've been a resident in the Blackman community all my life. Parents built our forever home in 2001, where we would end up spending my whole life playing outside, planting flowers with my mom, sitting on our patio, having a fire outside, our dogs running around in our backyard, and many cherished family memories and moments to even list off. As this is our home, this is the place where we go when we get off work and are ready to spend time decompressing from a busy day. It is our home, our safe space, and where we feel comfortable from all the busyness in the world. In 2016, we gave news that a church would be residing in the beautiful home that sits on the front of the end, front end of our neighborhood. The church members have always been welcoming, and I can even remember a night where the church came and sang carols during Christmas time. Over time, we've noticed how much the church has grown, which is wonderful to see. However, this just so happens to be in my backyard. There are many nights where we do not feel comfortable sitting on our patio due to the fear of our dogs barking and being loud. Kids are always playing and being kids, rejoicing with joy and playful fun. At times, this has become stressful to control our dogs barking and even be able to sit and watch TV in our living room without hearing screaming outside of our house. My father, who works nights, who sleeps during the day, is unable to get a full amount of sleep due to noise. Our worries with this expansion means more traffic, noise, and even more of a reason for us not to feel comfortable in our own home. I have loved our home and that my parents had built 22 years ago and want to one day bring my kids to where I grew up. My mother passed away in 2021, and our home is a small piece of something I have left of her. I sit on our patio where me and her would share countless laughs and stories. I go to her bedroom and lay in her bed. I sit in our kitchen and think about the times we cooked together. Our home is where I feel closest to her, and I don't want to lose that little piece of comfort me and my family have. However, with this expansion, we fear that this is going to cause more problems for our family and eventually lead to us having to make the big and hard decision of selling and moving. We are unaware of any plans for this church to expand, and I personally felt blindsided and felt like they did not care about those who reside around the property. There are houses to the left, right, in front of, and behind this property, which is why it has been zoned residential medium. Therefore, I am unsure why the need to expand seems even plausible. I want nothing more for this church to grow and enjoy their time with one another, but at what cost does that come to my family and our neighbors? I ask you and the church to reconsider this plan and think about the potential of finding property that would appease everyone. I voiced my opinion with respect and love and want nothing but the best for all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll need your name and address, please.
Jeffrey Dillard, 222 Foundry Circle, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37128. I reside at the very end of Arco at the stop sign. So while it doesn't affect me immediately or directly, it will affect me going through traffic. During the graph that I found online this morning, if we are to add 106 students, I'm going to be generous and say that's two students per vehicle that's going to be in addition to the already heavy traffic that's stated on your all's charts between 7:00 a.m., which is when school starts, and as well as 5:00 o'clock. The 7:00 a.m. goes Monday through Friday, and the 5:00 heavy days, I'm trying to find it, I'm sorry, are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, I believe they were. It's in your packet, you can check it. Couple questions that I had, and I did get to speak with Mr. Wax this morning on the phone. He was very nice and was able to explain, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, that switching this from a residence into the institutional could also potentially raise awareness for a homeless shelter to be established as well in that zone. Now, after speaking with Mr. Wax, he stated that that was not a case, but while he's in residence of this facility at 690, or I'm sorry, 390 Brinkley, who's to say that they don't outgrow this church? Is the mass that they are growing, and they're growing well, I've watched it, I moved in the same time they did, so, you know, when they get so large and they have to sell and go somewhere else because of their massive growth, where does that leave us as neighbors? That leaves us with the potential of anybody putting anything in the institutional section that can go there. That is my one concern. We are raising a family there ourselves. I'm not saying that a homeless shelter or halfway homes are not welcome, I'm just saying that it's probably not the best situation in that area. And just some questions that I'd like to have answered, was the school zone, which you guys brought up, and I appreciate. And they also states on page 3 of 4 in the staff report that there's already an agreement with a new charter school. I don't understand how there's an agreement already made when there's proposal is just being read for the first time without being passed. So those are some questions I have and would like to bring up for points of interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can pull that down if you'd like.
I don't have anything actually prepared. My name is Casey Brewer. I live at 248 Brinkley Road, right behind Blackman Baptist Church. We moved into our house December 31, 2010, was the day we closed. It has always been peaceful. We had seclusion back there, we could let our animals out, let them run free, let them exercise, and when the church moved in, it stayed that way for the most part, until recently, in the past few weeks. We have to close all of our blinds because soccer games are set up from the front of the property all the way to the back, and our driveway runs right along that property, and it drives my dog crazy. There is no peace left out there on most days, and when we talk about expansion, I'm not real clear on how they're going to expand from what they already have without taking over the homes and driving the residents out. I am, as everyone else has expressed, grateful to see the church grow and become healthy, but not at the risk of the residents that have built their lives there and their families. I just, I don't see the benefit of making this property institutional. It doesn't make sense. There's, there's schools around the corner from us, there's schools down the street from us, there's property other places where they could expand at a more rapid pace that would be more beneficial for them and for the existing families in our neighborhood. That's really all I had to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Toby Dudley. I live at 110 Arco Lane, which is directly behind the, what they use for sanctuary at this time. Like, I want to reiterate what my daughter said. I work day, night shift, I sleep during the day. I really don't have a problem with activities going on. I want the children to be able to play and do what children do, but it's already hard enough to sleep during the day, and this is literally 15 steps from my bedroom window, and it gets noisy, it gets loud, and it's just, it's hard enough. Changing the zone, this house, we've been there so long, like she said, it's been peaceful. We've known exactly what's going on. There's constant in and out, most every day anymore. It was at first, it was pretty peaceful, just Sunday and Sunday evening, maybe one day during the week, but here lately, it's been constant, in and out, in and out. We don't know who's back there, who's doing what. I'm all for the church growing. This property is not wide enough to add a whole lot of stuff to. This property is narrow, and it goes straight back. There are houses on both sides, like she said, back, front. It's just, it's, this property is just not set up for this. A gentleman that owned it previous, he ran a small business out of it, we never knew he was back there. It's basically a house with two garages on it, and that's where they're gathering, and you know, without sounding hateful, I just think that there are better solutions to this problem. Maybe some forethought into more property, you know. This property was not on the market very long when it sold. I don't know how much they thought about what they were going to do going forward, but I just feel like they, you know, changing, changing the zoning is the big thing. That leads to a whole different can of worms that we don't want to open beyond what it is now, so I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Leroy Wells, and I live at 400 Brinkley Road, right across from the church. And, you know, I know they're supposed to be widened in Brinkley Road, that may help with some of the traffic, but I think the church may be just a little ahead of their time, because there's all kinds of problems now on Brinkley Road with the traffic. I've had to replace my mailbox four times from people going down through that road very fast and going off into the curb, and that's, I've been living there for nine years now. I just think that, you know, it's kind of sad that a bunch of us moved into that area because it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and now somebody says, well, we want to change all the, all the surrounding elements now because of our business. I just don't understand why they would have picked that place to begin with as a church, and believe me, I go to church, I love the church I go to, but I just don't know that it's fair for somebody to move into a residential area and they want to change it, and all of us had nothing to do with that, and I just, I think they're ahead of their time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Russo. I live at 391 Meadow. It's a catty corner sort of on Brinkley there. Part of the issues here is that the property is not really, as others have mentioned, designed for a larger construction. The master plan, from what I can see, calls for eventually demolishing the house and putting a parking lot almost all the way up to Brinkley, which I think would be very destructive to the nature of the neighborhood. I appreciate that you moved here because you thought it was a nice neighborhood, but from what I can understand, most of your parishioners aren't even local. The school isn't going to benefit any of the local people. In fact, it might even be somewhat detrimental to the other local schools in the area. And then on top of that, on a very simple Google search, within 15 minutes of my house, which is across the street from you, there are 27 Baptist churches. I don't think we need another one. There are also an additional 18 other churches of various denominations, so I have a sort of nagging feeling that you've kind of oversaturated the market here. I do believe this is a business, and I do have a question, which is, the industrial zoning is a form of commercial zoning, is that correct? Or is like a subset of the commercial zoning?
Do you want to answer that now or wait till the public hearing's done?
Let's wait till the public hearing's done. We don't usually answer questions during the public hearing, just your comments.
All right.
And we'll answer that later when we do the commissioners.
Good enough, thank you. That's all my comments, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Someone else? Any other comments? If not, we'll close the public comment period. Commissioners, and Doug, you may...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and address the gentleman's question that he just asked.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and address the gentleman's question that he just asked. It's not industrial, it's institutional zoning, I think is what he meant to say. We have, the zoning classifications we have are broken down into several different categories. There's residential, there's commercial, there's office slash institutional and industrial, and then of course, planned developments, which is a different animal. Institutional falls under the office and institutional classification that we have. Generally speaking, the uses that are allowed in those zones aren't as intense as they are, say, in the commercial zones. Can you do more than what you can in the residential zones? Yes. But institutional zone especially is limited. I will take a moment just to comment on one of the speakers that said something about a homeless shelter or something like that. As of right now, we don't really have any regulations in our zoning that deals with a homeless shelter. So I'm not sure where he's getting that, that somebody could just put one up there because that would have to be some sort of a determination made, what zoning classification that fits into. Also, I will say that things like transitional homes and things like that, while allowed in institutional zones, are only allowed by special exception. In other words, they're not allowed by right. They would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a public hearing, which means that would go not to this body, but would go to the different body, the Board of Zoning Appeals. There would be a public hearing. Notice would be sent out, just like notice was sent out for today's meeting. So I did want to clarify that at least. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Doug, what's the history of the church as far as how long they've been there? And how did that come into being, that particular property, residential?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly how many years they've been out there. Kevin, how many? About six and a half, thank you. About six and a half years. When they purchased the property, Mr. Wax came in and met with us, kind of explained what he was wanting to do. Now, the way that we handle church uses, we classify them all religious uses as community assembly. We break them into three categories, small, medium, and large. Small community assemblies are those that their largest gathering area is less than 150 people. That's what he is qualified as at this time. That's allowed by right in residential zones. Now, at some point in the future, if the church continues to grow, he will get to medium, which will require him to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for any expansion. And if, in time, if it got large enough where it goes above 500, that's where it becomes a large community assembly. That does require the institutional zone. So when we discuss the issue with the school, and I will mention this, that the reason apparently there's an agreement prior to this coming before us is because they didn't realize they needed the zoning on the property. Mr. Wax came to meet with me about something else, say about a month ago or so, and had brought this up. And I informed him at that meeting that community education in our zoning ordinance, that's not an allowable use in the residential zones. So that's when this process started. So there wasn't, there's not any kind of attempt to try to sneak something under the rug or anything. They just clearly just didn't know. So that's what resulted in the meeting that we're having today. Did that answer your question? Okay. I will say too, as far as their expansion goes, this property is on septic. There's no sewer on this particular property. As far as those drawings and things that you have on your agenda, in your agenda packets on your iPads, and it's on our OneDrive too, so anybody in the audience could see them, those are not anything that they're locked into. Those are just ideas. Of course, they're going to have to come back through. If this is approved, they would have to come back through at some point for site plan approval. Practical, practically speaking, they are going to have to expand only as much as the septic swells on the property is going to allow them to expand. It may not be the entire, you know, build out that you're seeing here, you know? Drainage is a concern. There's other things that we have to look at. So just so everybody understands, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight with the church expansion. I imagine, you know, they've been there six and a half years, as Kevin, Mr. Wax said just a few moments ago. This is going to be something, a long-term vision that they have for the property, and it can change. Again, these are, these are not engineered plans. These are just conceptual plans that they're not locked into.
Doug?
Mr. Phillips. Thank you. Doug, you mentioned a use by right as it relates to small assemblies, 150 or under. This 102 child capacity on any given day would not exceed that 150. Is that correct?
Well, it wouldn't, but they're not classified. The education's a different classification than community assembly. Okay, they're community education, so it's a different line item, if you will, in the zoning ordinance. But I mean, to answer your question, I mean, once you take into account staff, you'd probably be right around that threshold. But the 150 threshold doesn't qualify for community education, just the community assembly uses.
Thank you. Also, when you get up to the medium size, that's 500?
That's up to 500, yes, sir.
And if they're knocking on the door of that 500 presently, and they kind of exceed that at some point in time, they would have to get it rezoned from residential medium density up to institutional, right?
Institutional, that's what we recommend, right. Now, I don't think their attendance is anywhere near that at this point. So they're not, you know, they're not operating as a large community assembly in a small area. So I think that they're still considered a smaller community assembly by our zoning, just due to the size of the building and everything that they're in, assembly area.
Let's just say exploded and they grow to 500 next year. They'd have to come to get rezoned from an institutional perspective, correct?
At that time, they would. That's correct, yeah.
Have we ever turned a church down for doing that?
I can't think of any, but obviously, we treat these the same as we treat anything. You know, we didn't specifically call out churches in our zoning due to, you know, of course, there are religious land use laws and things that we have to keep in mind. And from a legal standpoint, if we're treating them the same as we treat any community assembly, then generally, we're on solid legal ground. I'm not a lawyer. I'll defer to Nick if he wants to add any other comments on that. But we lump community assembly with religious uses, social, cultural, there's several different uses that fall under that category.
Churches that use their facility during the week as some type of a preschool or a kindergarten and/or a daycare center, would they have to get rezoned as well for use?
Well, if they're doing, say like a Mother's Day Out program, it's just a couple days a week kind of a thing, they're allowed to do that. When you start getting into like an actual daycare type facility, that falls under personal group care facilities. And it's a different, it's special exception in that zone. So when you start getting into like a larger daycare, like you're talking about, they'd have to get special approval for that.
And that's happened?
Yeah, actually, it has. I just, there's one I can think about that was like that. But a lot of churches, you know, I can speak for my church, they have like a Mother's Day Out program that meets two days a week. We built some allowances in the zoning for that, so they didn't have to, churches didn't have to come back for that kind of a use.
Thank you.
Ben, I'm the newest guy here. Yes, I got a question in terms, what I heard presented didn't sound like necessarily they was looking for long-term. This group's got a building they're looking to put up. I don't think the church is looking at anything long-term, at least I didn't hear that. I'm familiar with the previous owner of this track. If you look at the depth of that track on your map, that's several hundred feet back there. I'm just wondering, do we ever do anything on a two-year, three-year, so that both parties can get what they want and neighborhood gets kind of what they want in terms of their concern about it being something different than it looks like on paper today?
From a zoning standpoint, if you rezon property, the only way to undo that is to go back and rezon it back to something else. So there's not a provision that would allow you to do like a temporary rezoning or something like that, no.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yeah, thank you. Several questions. Currently, with their membership, they're in compliance with zoning.
Correct, yes, sir.
And could I ask the pastor with the membership?
Kevin, come to the...
Why don't you come to, come to the whale up here?
I don't know the exact number, but I will tell you that on any given Sunday, we have about 100, 110 people in attendance. Yesterday was Easter, it was a little bit higher.
Since I got them up here, if I may, so about 100, 110, and that's Sunday. What other church times do you have? Like Wednesday night, Sunday night, or?
We have, I think the first Sunday of each month, we have a fellowship. And we have Friday nights, we have the youth meet Friday nights. And just recently, we were approached and asked by the Homeschooling Association if they could use our back three acres for soccer fields. And so they're using that once every two weeks. I believe it's Tuesday nights. Is that correct? Is it, is it? Once a week, my bad. Once a week.
And is that, is that in the evening or?
It is. It's in the late afternoon, evening. There's no lights back there, so. 5:30 to 7:30.
I think that's all I have for you. So, Mr. Demossi, you said like 100, 110. Where is the threshold again that it would take it to medium?
150.
150.
And it's not based on the membership, it's based on the capacity, the occupancy of the actual meeting area.
Okay, so the occupancy right now is current.
They could have 300 members, but only have occupancy for 100, 150 of them, and they'd still be in compliance.
Got you, got you. Would you take a minute to, though currently, they're in compliance, and if we, if this, I think if the school wasn't going in, we probably, probably wouldn't be here. I think if it was for expansion, they may come back at that time when they want it to expand to, up to 150 or over 150. But my question is, could you describe if it was rezoned to institutional, what the buffering would be like for the neighbors?
It's a, what's considered a type one buffer, which is, of the three types of buffers that we have in the zoning ordinance, that one's the lightest of the three. Your heavier buffers, type two and three are for commercial or industrial uses against residential. So bear with me a second, I'm just trying to get to the ordinance here. Okay, here we go. So a type one buffer, average buffer width is 15 feet. You can reduce that to seven and a half if you're using a solid visual screen like a privacy fence, something like that, a wall, some plant material. It's per every 100 feet of buffer area that provides so many trees and so many shrubs along that per 100 feet of length of the buffer area. Now, again, they are in compliance with what they're doing right now. You know, in time, if they expand, that's probably when we would say, okay, you need to start looking at some increased buffers. I know they've done some amount of landscaping back there. Now, obviously, looking at the aerial, there's not a uniform buffer across there, but at this point, they wouldn't be required to do that. So, but that's what you're looking at of a buffer as a type one, which is again, the lightest of the three we've got.
I'm sorry, I guess so what you would consider on regular church services, and then I think on the Friday night youth, which is soccer practice or games from 5:30 to around 7:30, would that buffer, buffer that out? Or buffer most of it out? In your opinion, what would, what would that buffer look like or sound like or?
Well, if they're trying to, to do something that is offering a little more privacy to the homeowners that surround the property, I mean, it may be some sort of like a privacy fence or something like that. That would probably be the most effective. You know, the trees and the shrubs, I mean, I have, you know, we do encourage them to plant those, of course, they're required to anyway, but you know, even if they decided not to do a fence, they'd have to put more plant material out there. That just takes time to mature, you know? They're not going to put it in. It's automatically going to be this huge visual screen, you know? It's going to take several years for it to mature. So the quickest way to do it would probably be to do some sort of a privacy fence, in my opinion.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Demossi. So if there is, if the commitment is for one year for a school, would that not just be like a, I don't know, a special permit for a year, Board of Zoning Appeals for a year? Does it have to be rezoned?
Well, community education is only allowed in, it's not allowed in residential zones by special exception. So if that were allowed, that's probably the route they would have went. But the way, when we redid the ordinance 10 years ago at this point, we did it as an institutional use, not a residential use. So there isn't really an opportunity at this point for them to go to the BZA for something like that because it's not prescribed that way in our ordinance.
Okay, so there's nothing other than if it, if it's just a one-year commitment for the school, there's no way around rezoning?
Correct. If they want to use it for a school, this is what they have to do.
Questions? Commissioner P.
Yeah, Mr. Demossi, will you go over the conditions of the institutional? What are, what is allowed in the institutional zoning?
You mean the uses? Is that what you're talking about? Okay, okay. Zoom back there. I actually had that chart up just a second ago. Here we go. Okay. Again, our uses are broken down into several different major categories, residential, community facility, commercial activities, et cetera. Institutional zoning does not allow any residential use. It does allow, of course, we've talked about community assembly, so we've covered that. Administrative services like government offices, things like that would be allowed. Community education, we've talked about that. Cultural and recreation services, that could be, you know, like museums, things like that would be allowed in that zone. Essential services, again, that's getting into more government-type things, is allowed. But kind of what I alluded to earlier, healthcare facilities, institutional care facilities, minimal impact, and personal and group care facilities are all allowed by special exception. That means they're not allowed by right. They have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an additional layer of review, if you will. Entertainment and amusement services, this would be somebody that wanted to do like outdoor recreation of some sort, would be allowed by special exception. Let's see, medical services, doctors' offices, hospitals, things like that, special exception. And that's about it. Everything else is not permitted.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but of what you have stated, most other uses would have to come back for a special exception?
Most of, not all, but most of them. There are several, especially like I said, that the one gentleman that spoke had some concerns about transitional homes and things. That would have to be special exception. Even the daycares that Mr. Phillips was talking about earlier would be special exception. Again, the homeless shelters, that's a whole different ballgame. That would require some sort of a change to our ordinance because right now, they're not even listed in here.
Commissioner Whitworth?
Excuse me, I've got two or three questions, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Demossi. Number one, if this is, this is a school, will they have to put signage and speed zones on the road?
I don't think there's any requirement from our standpoint that they do that. Now...
If so, who is responsible for that? The school or the church?
I think the school, along with the county, it says a county road through here, so that would be something he'd have to take up with Greg Brooks, our highway superintendent.
Okay, so question number two, real quickly, probably a yes or no. Is the house currently occupied as a residence?
I don't believe so. I think they use it as a church office and then like a meeting area.
Well, I thought, I thought at one point in the meeting, it was being used as a residence, and I thought I heard you say that in the institutional, it would not be a, could not be a residence.
Well, yeah, let's, okay, for the sake of argument, let's just say that it was. If this were to be rezoned in such a way that, let's just say this was a residence and they did rezon the property, it would be what's considered a non-conforming use, a grandfathered use. In other words, as long as they continued operating, using it in that manner and didn't cease operations, there's some nuances in state law about how long that lasts. But if it continues in use, it can continue. It's allowed to do that. Now, if they ever completely redevelop the property, stop the use, then, and this is any non-conforming use, then they would lose their grandfather status. They couldn't say, well, I'm going to go back to what it was before. They'd have to rezon the property at that point.
Okay, question number three. Does this property join city? I noticed in some of the...
The back, I think?
The back of it is on city, and I believe they've applied for, to be included in the city. Is that right?
The school or the church?
The church. Didn't they say that at the beginning?
No, no, the school is, is looking at some property off of the Manson Pike, I believe. And that's going through... and that's going through the zoning and the annexation process, not this property. This property is just the church. The property that the school is looking to move to as their permanent home, that's what they're looking to annex into the city. Yeah. Yeah, Mike's kind of pointing it out right there, that's the property in, right in that area that they're looking at.
Other questions? Mr. Gooch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, this is in my district, and I guess they better just kind of wait for me to say something, but I had talked with Brother Kevin about this, as far as the church wanting to grow some, and I thought, well, that's a good idea, and a charter school for a year, I thought, well, that's a good idea. I did not know the concerns of the neighborhood that they have, and they sound like legitimate concerns. The majority of the concerns I think I've heard is noise of soccer games that meets once a week. I feel like that the buffering that they would have to put up would solve that, could go away to solve that problem, but I would like to hear further from the neighbors. Would it be appropriate to defer this and give me time to do that? Or is there a deadline that the church has, or the school has, that they need an answer very soon? I guess is my question, Mr. Chairman.
So are you, let me ask the commissioner, are you wanting to have maybe a public meeting or so with the community out there?
Yes, and possibly it could be at the church. And I feel like that, that the concerns that I have, and I know that traffic's always a concern, but I know the, the plans for the roads and out there, but the noise, just by zoning it, could alleviate a lot of that noise that the neighbors have without any undue more activity. But I would like to have time to, to meet with them on that possibly. I did not know this and did not have the opportunity. So that might be my question, is if, could we defer it and let us have maybe a neighborhood meeting? And then I guess the question would be, when do you need to have a decision?
Chairman?
First of all, I'd like to say that from a buffering perspective with the neighbors, we have already begun demonstrating that we believe in buffering, we like buffering. The, the property line between us and Mr. Dudley and Mrs. Dudley, we have already put up a double row of evergreens, and we talked to other neighbors about doing that, if they would like that as well. So we are 100% committed to doing the buffering above and beyond whatever would be required of us, because we know what it's like, we're neighbors here, we live here too, so. And in regards to timing, Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, so for the timing for us as a charter school, I mean, we really, as far as the timeline goes, should have already opened applications for potential students, so we're already kind of behind the eight ball. So we had looked to this meeting as really the decision-maker for us as a school, depending on how tonight went, as to whether or not we were going to move forward. We had an agreement with the church that was really contingent on this process, this being part of that process, and so, you know, we'll make a decision based upon, you know, what the will of the commission is, whether or not we move forward. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Could I, could I follow up on that just a little bit? You're gonna, you want to open up two grades, K and one?
Yes, sir.
K through one. What's the big deal? Why don't you just wait till next year?
Well, I think we're excited. We're excited about being part of Rutherford County and, and offering something new, and so we wanted to go ahead and get open. We've had our charter for, I guess, two years now, and because it's been so difficult to find property to build on, we've, we've delayed that and delayed that, and so, you know, frankly, we're just anxious to get started. And we, we know that there is a need for it over there. You know, almost all the Blackman schools have portables outside because they're overcrowded. When we were approved and started looking for real estate, we went to the county school board and said, where should we go? Where can we go in, in Rutherford County that would alleviate pressure for you guys? And they said, if you could go to Blackman. And so that's, that's what we committed to, and that's what we're doing.
You're preaching to the choir. School board has asked us for 200-plus million dollars next year, okay? Once again, my question is, what's the big deal? Why not wait and open your school when you can get all the students in there and not cause aggravation in this community? Why?
Well, we, we want to be a good community partner, and so if the community, if, if the community wants us to wait until '24, then that's what we're going to do. So if that's the will of, of the neighbors and the community, and we want to be good partners and good neighbors, and so that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr.?
So, two grades, there's no plan, there's no Plan B. Plan B would be waiting till 2024.
Right.
Okay, so if it was delayed a month, obviously, that's a kind of a hardship, but would it prohibit the school if it was ultimately approved?
I think so, just because we, there's, there's a lot of compliance things that have to happen, we, with our authorizer at the state, there's certain benchmarks that we have to meet that we're already kind of behind the eight ball on as well, as, as far as the facility goes, and a few other upgrades to the facility that we're going to need to be made. And so really, a 30, another 30 days of kind of being in limbo would really, really put us behind, so I think for us, we kind of look to tonight as, as really, you know, stay or go kind of thing for, for August of '24. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
While he's up, I got one question, Pat, from, separate the church from the non-charter in terms of taxes for this county. Do you pay taxes? I know the church is exempt, would you be paying?
We do not, we're a nonprofit, yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Gooch?
Okay, Mr. Demossi, so what is a level-two buffering?
A level-two buffer would be a minimum of 30 feet, with a minimum of 15 if they put a solid visual screen up. Now, let me just, in case this is where you're going with it, if you wanted to rezone the property, you cannot condition it upon that, because this is not a planned development, so you're not allowed to put conditions upon the zoning. So if we're a planned development, yeah, you could build that in there, but not with a conventional zone like this.
Okay, but a level-one buffering was a privacy included, could include a privacy screen?
It could, well, any of them can.
With some vegetation?
Right, right, any of them can. If you go, if you don't do a privacy fence, you're required to have a wider width and then have more plantings. If you have a privacy fence, it can be a little narrower, and you don't have to put as many plantings. So that's regardless of what buffer level you're at, one, two, or three, so any of them gives you that option.
But we could make a motion with the privacy screening as part of the level-one buffering? Or do they choose that?
No, I don't think you could. I think what you could do is say, if you recommended approval of the zoning, you could encourage them that when we look at any kind of a plan, that that's what you want them to do, but you can't condition the zoning upon that. If this were a planned development, then yes, I think you could, but you can't do that here with this.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners?
Let me just add one other thing. We're talking about soccer practice one day a week. What's to prevent them from having baseball practice, soccer practice, seven days a week? Is there anything to stop them from doing that? I'm not even sure that that's an issue, simply because if they can do it with the soccer once a week, they could do it with soccer seven days a week if they wanted to, is that correct? Under the zoning?
You'll have to forgive me, I'm, I'm, I was talking with our attorney.
I think what he's talking about, that if all of a sudden, they decided they wanted to do it every day a week, if they wanted soccer practice every day or something, could they just go ahead and do that too?
Under the current zone, or?
Under the current zone.
I mean, a lot of churches have activities beyond your traditional Sundays and Wednesdays. Now, if they were starting to offer it as something more than that, we might get into the whole entertainment and amusement services, special exception possibly, but a lot of times, if it's part of the church, you know, lots of churches do those kind of things. Now, something that Mr. Christiansen and I were just talking about in regard to the neighborhood meeting, Commissioner Gooch that you were referring to, since this is a rezoning, of course, the planning commission is a recommending body, so the final decision isn't here, the final decision, as you know, is with the Board of Commissioners. So the idea was, well, in that month, would that give them enough time to have a neighborhood meeting? If this moves forward from the planning commission, go into the full Board of Commissioners, and then at that time, if some sort of agreement couldn't be reached, the Board of Commissioners could still, you know, and being you're the commissioner of that district, you could still at that point have additional discussion at the next meeting regarding that. That's an option as well.
And that's at the May commission meeting?
Yes, sir, which I think...
And so they wouldn't know if it was, if it was a done deal until that meeting anyway?
Sorry.
I mean, they wouldn't really know that it's a done deal until the May meeting, commission meeting anyway, regardless.
That's correct, right, right. I mean, right now, it's a recommendation, you know, the, the county commission is not bound by the recommendation that the planning commission makes, just like you're not bound by any recommendation, we make a staff. So you're right, this is not, this is only the first meeting.
Okay, I would like to make a motion then, that we move this on to the full commission with staff comments, with the anticipation of having a neighborhood meeting.
Have a motion?
Is that for approval? Or you just said to move it forward, or you didn't really say, okay?
Was that anticipation or requirement?
Well, if it doesn't happen, we're not going to vote for it, to approve it in May. Did that answer your question?
I have a motion, do we have a second? Charlotte, Charlotte has seconded for the discussion. If not, we'll have a voice, vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
No.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Tadus Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry, this will be coming for the Board of Commissioners on May 11th, Any old business at this time?
I do not have any old business at this time.
Staff reports and other business?
I will, just follow me, okay. For those who may have seen the Public Works Committee meeting that was held last week, myself, Mr. Hughes, our county engineer, and our co-director, Tanya Bell, gave a presentation to the committee regarding our fee structure, ways to possibly look at increasing some fees, ways to charge fees for things that we currently do not charge for. At that meeting, the committee asked us to go ahead and bring some more formal recommendations to the planning commission for their consideration, and then eventually, bring it back to the Public Works Committee, and then full commission for potential action. So I just wanted to let you all know that we are working on that as staff. At our next meeting, we'll probably go through a similar presentation, just a little bit more detailed regarding some ideas for some possible fee changes, so I just wanted to kind of make you aware of that. Also, one other thing I did want to mention, our Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, we're going to have our second meeting, it's going to be next Monday, 2 o'clock, over in our HR department training room, just looking forward to that, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that was going on as well. With that, that's all I really had, Mike, did you?
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a suggestion, or a recommendation, I'm on the Public Works Committee meeting, and there's a couple of us here that are, there was a certain amount of emergency, urgency, maybe I should say, to this recommendation, and I would ask that the staff, including our chairman, to not only make that presentation before us on April the 24th at our 9:00 AM meeting, but also come with a recommend, recommended fee schedule. I'll make that in form...
That as a motion?
I'll make that in form of a motion if need be, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
And don't be surprised, don't be surprised at some of the fees I'm going to pitch towards you.
Maybe I should have asked you, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you?
That'll be fine. So we'll bring that forward at our next meeting, which is a 9:00 meeting here within the chambers. Any further discussion? If not, we'll adjourn this meeting.